Okay, I'm gonna call this April 15th, 2021, Commissioner's Special Meeting to Order. Gentlemen, our guest today is Ted Glessner, Court Administrator's Office. Ted, I'd like to introduce my counterparts, Joe Wambacher from the Bucksport area, and Paul Parity from Bar Harbor Districts 2 and 3. Gentlemen, this is Ted Glessner. And as we know, judges come and go, but Ted's the mainstay. It seems like he's been there as long with Court Administrator's Office as I've been with the county. Well, what happened, gentlemen, you said Ted emailed me a couple of days ago and wanted to know if he could give me a quick call and talk about some updates on the the search for a replacement for courts. I thought it might be a discussion the gentleman wanted to hear and I didn't want to have to try to relay it, the information. So that's what we were able to arrange this Zoom meeting. Ted, thank you for joining us. Thank you for being patient, and we're glad to have you. We're going to turn the floor over to you and hear what you have to tell us.
Well, thank you very much. First of all, this is incredibly good service. As Commissioner Clark says, I wanted to reach out to the commissioners and just provide an update, let you know what's happening as far as the project is concerned, and be prepared to answer any questions that you might have. And I didn't anticipate that I'd be able to get in and chat with all of you quite so quickly. So I really thank you for your consideration and for your availability. It's been a while since we were in Ellsworth to talk about the project and where we wanted to go from there. And at that time, my understanding was and is that there is support on the part of the commissioners for us to continue forward with this project. I would just say to you that we've been working on courthouse projects and making improvements for a number of years now. And one of the locations that's been on our list and we're finally able to get there is the courthouse situation in Ellsworth. And so it was the year before last when we commissioned a study. Had the study done, it came back with recommendations, gave us some cost information based on what we identified as our needs within the building. Talked about what our options were, and the recommendation was that we build a new building, a new state courthouse, rather than attempting to further renovate the current county courthouse. And so we've moved ahead with that line of thinking. What has to happen is, in order for a project to go forward, we have to get the authorization of the legislature. They're the ones who would be funding this. What we're talking about building is a state project at no cost to the county. And so we have to gain that authorization from the legislature. And along with that, they make the commitment that the state will issue bonds, and it's the proceeds of those bonds that we use for the construction process. So my hope had been to be further along with the project than we are, but I think you've all heard that we've had this COVID problem for the last year. And for us, it's been a major setback. I know we've all in our personal lives and professional lives have been affected by this very significantly. And for the court community, what it's meant, as you know, is we've really had to slow down on the work that we're doing. We've developed backlogs with cases. And we're at a point now where we've been hoping we could move in a positive direction. The current numbers, just this week in Maine, are not good. So we're seeing an uptick in cases and so forth. And we take those numbers, by the way, into account with regard to our scheduling. We take a look at that, and we have a rating system that we use with all the information that's reported to us through the CDC and other sources to decide just what the circumstances are. We get into a red zone in our definition, then things really slow down pretty dramatically. And so we're working our way through that, and unfortunately, we're still dealing with those issues and will be for the foreseeable future. I tell you all that because I would rather be having a decision, a discussion, rather, with the legislature right now to say, "We want to get authorization for this project." Instead, we're one step beyond, behind that, which is what I want to bring you up to speed on today. When the recommendation came back from the architect who did the study, the recommendation was to build a new building. And even specifically recommended that we take a look at the property, which I'll simply describe as the Ruth Foster property. It doesn't mean we've made a commitment to that. That's what is recommended. And from our perspective, we see that as a very desirable location. And the reason I say that is that the amount of space is sufficient. You know, we just built a new courthouse in Belfast. The piece of property we had actually is about half the size of the Ruth Foster property. So we know that there's enough space there to build what we would want to build in this courthouse and to do so comfortably. We like the fact that it's adjacent to the jail. We also, this is important, there's actually laws, the law that talks about this, but we believe in the law that talks about the benefit of, they refer to a downtown location. I like to think about where the courthouse is located now as a key part of the governmental center, right there in the heart of Ellsworth, and it makes sense to stay in that center. Whenever, when people think about going to the courthouse, that's where they think about going. They'd still be going to that area. So anyway, we like that location. We like that property if that were something that we could accommodate. But the first step in the process, or the next step in the process, I guess if you will, would be to go to the legislature and to see if we could get authorization to be able to acquire property that we could use for this new courthouse project. Doesn't always work that way. Sometimes we get authorization for the full project. But what I would like to do is to go to the current legislature and say to them that we would like to be able to acquire property. We would like authorization to acquire property that would be used for the new courthouse. Now, that doesn't say specifically that piece of property, because you have to go through a fair process, right? I can't just call Ruth Foster and say, "I'm gonna offer you X number of dollars." Property has to be evaluated. I mean, you understand the whole process. We're talking about the people's money here, and so we have to deal with that fairly. But we also know that that's a very desirable site, if that was possible. And if we knew that that was going to be the site of the courthouse, then that helps us as far as the next level, as far as planning is concerned. Because if we're not able to acquire that property and we have to go somewhere else, well, then, you know, what you're able to construct is different. What you're going to be able to do is going to be somewhat different. Availability of parking or any other kinds of considerations that are built in. So what I am hoping to be able to do is to go to the legislature, the current legislature. By the way, they're quite busy right now, but I'm hoping that they're going to accept a recommendation that we have a late filed bill that would give us the authorization to spend money to be able to acquire this property. Now, here's the thing that I think is important and makes this feasible at this time, and that is that we had a bond that was issued for the last three projects that we did. And what I want to say to the legislature is, I would like to add to the authorization for the use of that bond money. So not only for the Belfast courthouse that we already built and the South Paris project that we already finished and the Biddeford courthouse that's now under construction, but I'd also like to spend a little bit of that money, a little bit relative to the overall bond that was issued, to be able to acquire property for this courthouse. And if we do it that way, I will not be asking them for new money. I'm going to say, "We have the money in the current bond, but I can't spend it for something else unless they tell me that I can." And so that's what I want to get the authorization for from the legislature. Now, here's what I want to tell you. And as Commissioner Clark says, I've been doing this for, it feels like 100 years. It's only been 28 years, but it's not my first opportunity to have these conversations with the legislature. And I can remember being told on an earlier project that when I go before that appropriations committee and I say, "I want to go with this project", someone said to me, "The first question you're going to be asked, Ted, is, do the county commissioners agree with this?" I said, "Really? And that's the first question you're going to be asked to the county commissioners?" Because we're talking about what's now the county courthouse. We're talking about rearranging things in terms of what would be this courthouse and so forth. And so the opinion of the county commissioners counts greatly. And so again, this was in my younger years, but I went before the appropriations committee. "Are there any questions for Mr. Glessner?" After I gave my presentation. "Mr. Glessner, do the county commissioners agree with this project?" But wow, somebody knew what they were talking about. And so where you are coming from is important, because here's why, okay? Ultimately, we're going to ask the legislature. The legislature that's made up of representatives of 16 counties. Should we agree to spend a lot of money in this one county? And if the county itself isn't wildly behind this project, then we can just pack our bags and go home. I want to tell you, I won't pack my bag and go home. I'll pack my bag and go to another county, because there's some other counties that are knocking on my door that would want to be supportive of this. I believe you're supportive. I think that's what you told me two years ago. And in fact, I think you may have even issued something at the time. I seem to remember a motion being made that maybe it was in the minutes of the meeting. Maybe you sent me a letter at the time. I don't recall. I haven't had a chance to research that. But I believe that the county commissioners have indicated that they are supportive. Because after this conversation, if you tell me you're supportive, you're still supportive, then I'm going to be meeting with the legislative delegation, the Hancock County Legislative Delegation legislators who have any piece of Hancock County in their areas. And I want to be able to say to them, "Yes, I've met with the commissioners and they are supportive of this." Because I need the county delegation to be supportive when I go and meet with the full legislature. It's just, it's the way things work. It's the process. So I just want you to know, I certainly don't want you to read this in the newspaper, that I've gone to the legislature and asked for a late filed bill that gives me authorization, gives the judicial branch authorization to pursue the purchase of property that could be used for, that would be used for this courthouse in Ellsworth. And so I just wanted to explain to you where we were in the process, tell you we've had some slippage time-wise, but I think we've all had slippage time-wise over the last year. But I am at a point where before the legislature gets out of town, I'd like to get this authorization done if we had the determination made with regard to the property. In the next session, that's when we would be going to get the actual authorization so we could actually get started on the project. But at this point, it would be the part about acquiring the property. So that's why I'm here, give you that update, ask you that question, and at that point, I'll just stop and defer to you.
I've got a couple of questions. Ted, I'm trying to mute this phone somehow. But I'm fairly new, so this is the first I hear of this. I've sort of, my feeling is that if we're going to say we support this, that we should memorialize it with a motion. But I just want to ask my colleagues and the, you know, the county staff that is there, should we be supporting this? Does it, it seems to me it makes sense, but, you know, before I can make a motion, I need a little background.
Well, Ted, let's talk first of all, Paul, you haven't seen the study yet. I think Scott just sent that to everybody electronically, but it's a lengthy document. But as Ted said, the first preference was going to be the Foster property next door. Ted, did that plan physically place a building on that property? In other words, did it locate that, the footprint on the property? I don't recall seeing that.
No, no, the plan does not do that. What the plan says is that that property is large enough to put a building of the size that we're talking about. But no, that would be part of the, you know, the design work that would be done by the architect.
Do you think that necessitated the need to tear down the Foster house? Because it's like three and a half acres out behind it. Did they, they think they were going to demolish that and use some of that property?
I do think so. First of all, I'll just tell you, it's very, very limiting. Even if you have a house like that and it's got the, you know, the beautiful frontage, we take a look at that building and people would say, "Can you preserve that building?" But to try to work around that with all of the design considerations and so forth, it would, the building would have to be replaced.
Okay, so there's no way that you could somehow get a courthouse on there having that building and the curtilage separate property from the courthouse property?
So I'm not going to say to you that it's not possible, because you could fit a footprint in there. But you're going to talk about just the travel, you know, in and out of there and the space constraints and all of that sort of thing. Even the way you want that, you want the courthouse to be what's visible from the street. It's not a building that's back behind, you know, you go up the driveway and the courthouse is back there. You want that to be a prominent location there on the street. So it can be done. I think most people would look at that and say it probably shouldn't be done. That being done, meaning retain the house.
Are we competing, Ted, with any other counties right now for a new courthouse? Or are we next in line?
So there's no official determination, you know, it's not written anywhere. I will tell you that as far as the judicial branch is concerned, we've identified Ellsworth as being next in line. That's where we want to go. I would also tell you, Commissioner, that we have in the past found that it was beneficial in some cases to go to the legislature to identify more than one project at the same time. And there's a number of reasons for that, but at this point, we're only talking about Ellsworth.
Well, I can tell you from my experience, the option number one is really the best option, and I could fully support that, having that next door. In my 34 years as sheriff, I saw a number of jails leave the county complex, build away from it, start experiencing those transportation issues and the separation issues. And having been, having the court on the county complex campus has been a real benefit over the years, and I would certainly like to continue to see that. And that would be a big factor in getting my full support for this project if that's what ultimately happened. John, you have questions, comments?
I mean, I agree. It seems to me like obviously that property is the perfect choice for a new building. So in that sense, I support it. I guess I wonder, and maybe it was addressed in the, in the report, but I kind of forget now, but exactly when it's all said and done, how do we utilize our space in the old courthouse at that point? What happens there?
That comes back to us. There was a piece of legislation back in, what, 1972, Ted?
Seventy-six.
Seventy-six. Converted county property jurisdiction over to the courts within the courthouse. And Mike Povich actually negotiated that on behalf of the county. And so there are designated areas within the courthouse that are under the jurisdiction of the courts. Now, Ted, correct me if I'm wrong, but it only seems clear to me and looking at Penobscot and other places that once a new complex is built out of the courthouse, all that reverts back to the county. Is that correct, Ted?
That is correct. It's the county courthouse, and since 1976, the space that had been used by the court system, before the court system got changed in 76, according to the law, that continues to be used by the state for the courthouse. And the bad deal for the commissioners and the counties all these years has been we are there as a non-paying tenant for all those years. Now it reverts to you, and every place where this has happened, people say, "What's that mean as far as the courthouse?" And the counties have always found great opportunities there within the building, you know, to use it for other purposes. I think, for instance, in Penobscot, you mentioned that. I think they now have their whole 911 center there and so forth. They've, it's not sitting as an empty building, I can tell you that.
John, if you understand that that full third floor is all court-controlled, that would all revert back to us, and what just endless possibilities for us as far as what we could do with that and what we'd want to do with that and so on. And knowing that the court would still only be, you know, just a walk across the doyad, and we have that space back, I mean, that's really a win-win for us. And Ted, if the county purchased that property and then made that available to the state, would that reduce any complications for you?
No, not unless we weren't able to purchase it, you know, but it isn't necessary to do. In other words, just to step back, just so you understand this as well. Exactly what happens is there's something called the Main Governmental Facilities Authority. They're the ones that will issue the bonds. And it's like something else. It's like if you had a mortgage. They technically own this until we pay off the bonds, all right? And so in order for them to issue the bonds, that piece of property would have to be already owned by the state in order for them to be able to do that. If your question was, if we weren't successful in getting the authorization now from the state, we had to wait until next year, and if the county did that, if the county purchased it and then we purchased it from the county next year, those are possibilities, but I'm hoping, I hadn't really thought about that. We, there's no specific benefit to that unless we wanted to make sure that, you know, that we had control of that property now, in the event that we didn't yet have the authorization.
Well, at some point, Ted, I'd like to talk with you when we get farther along in this process, about the possibility of getting a small piece in the corner that's facing the jail out of that. I mean, we're talking really a ministerial piece, but we desperately need storage space up there for the jail and whatnot. And there isn't enough room there now to put that kind of space. But I've always looked at that property next door and wondered if one day, if somehow we couldn't acquire that. So anyways, at some point someday, I just wanted to give you a heads up that we might, we might talk to you about somehow, I mean, some kind of a deal where we could get just a slice of that.
Okay. Yep, I would be happy to talk to you about that. Well, you know, whatever the possibilities are, sure.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, so my first question is, all we're talking about today is, because we've talked about buildings and that kind of stuff, is you're asking for our support for the acquisition, period, right? We're not, there are no other plans other than acquisition at this point. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and we're talking about state acquisition?
That is correct.
Okay, so I'm going to throw this motion on the floor. I'm going to move to support the state acquisition of the adjacent Ruth Foster property for a county courthouse project as outlined by Ted Glessner on today, April 15th, 2021. Does that do what you need?
Well, let me say this. This is where this gets, this is where this gets difficult, okay? I would prefer that you not say the Ruth Foster property. What I'm really asking you to support, what I'm really asking you to support is the concept of this courthouse and us, you know, acquiring property so we can stay right there in Ellsworth. The reason I say that, please understand, I haven't cut a deal with Ruth Foster. I don't want anybody to think that. It's just that that's the property that was identified by the person who did the study. So I'm really, I just want to know that the county commissioners support the idea of a new courthouse being built, you know, in close proximity to, you know, to the current courthouse, without specifically identifying Ruth Foster's property.
Okay, I'll, I'm working on that now. So about, instead of mentioning that, I say, of a property in close proximity to the county, to the current county courthouse.
Right.
Is it important for the legislature to know that we support your efforts for a new courthouse, no matter where it is?
Yes.
Because, Paul, obviously, for what, as I've already said, the best case scenario is for them to build on the Foster property. That's the best case. Then they buy it, they build on it, it's right there in their backyard and whatnot. But heaven forbid that didn't happen, but they found a piece of property a mile up the road or somewhere within the downtown area, and it wasn't close to the county complex campus. I'm still thinking that the benefit of getting back the space in that courthouse still warrants our support of the court administrator going after a new courthouse for Ellsworth. So I'm prepared today to say I support the state's effort to build a new court in the city of Ellsworth, period.
Okay, so how, well, a lot of what Ted talked about is, you know, they like proximity. So to me, I think that's English that Ted would like to see in there. Am I mistaken there or?
Yeah, so here's the thing, and again, I just want to be clear. I'm not trying to play any games with the public or whatever in this regard. The recommendation was the Ruth Foster property, and that's what I'm hoping we'll be able to acquire. But as Commissioner Clark says, if we're not able to get that, then we'll want to get the next best option, whatever that might be. I don't know what that might be. And I would like to have, yeah, the support of the commissioners for us to do that. If we move to some other location other than the Foster property, that is correct. The county definitely benefits by getting back that space, so there is that. And you also benefit, obviously, by your constituents and your neighbors having the benefit of this new facility to, you know, to conduct their court business in.
So my question is this. Currently, my motion is going to be this. Move to support the state acquisition of property in close proximity to the county courthouse for a new county courthouse project as outlined by Ted on this date. Do you not like, would you rather have me state the city of Ellsworth as opposed to close proximity? Or what is more benefit? Because I think we all support this. We just want, you know, we want your advice on what's more beneficial to get you through the legislature.
So what's more beneficial for me is if the language is a little more permissive. So if you talked about the city of Ellsworth as opposed to close proximity, I'm telling you, I want close proximity, and that's what I'm going to argue to the legislative delegation. But I'd rather have the broader support of the commissioners.
And I'll tell you, Paul, I would not withdraw my support if it turned out it was up to Ellsworth Falls or it was out on the Bucksport Road or it was down on the Bar Harbor Road. I would not withdraw my support simply because of the benefit of getting back that property on the third floor. So that doesn't, I'm very comfortable with a motion that says simply, "Build within the city."
Okay.
John?
Yep, I'm for it.
Okay.
Then the city's fine.
So craft that again, Paul, please.
Okay, I'm writing it as we speak, but here's move to support the state acquisition of property located in the city of Ellsworth for a new county courthouse project is outlined by Ted Glessner on today, 4/15/2021.
I'll second that.
Okay, maybe have a motion made and seconded.
Does that do everything you need, Mr. Glessner?
It does, thank you very much, thank you.
Rebecca, you got that okay? Gentlemen, further discussion on the motion.
Here, I do have one just comment, you would ask earlier about a drawing and if you look at Appendix D in that report, there is a drawing that shows the outlay of a new courthouse and the parking lots and how it portrays to the relates to the to the jail building.
Is it a footprint on the existing property or is it just a design for?
It's an architectural drawing and then there's the footprint of, it's a footprint of the building and then there's, I believe it's more detailed drawings, Appendix D.
Okay, the only thing I would say to that, if I could, Scott, is that's the concept drawing, so that they they could show that it could fit on that building, you know, of a certain configuration. But what the size of a building would look like on that site, but it might end up being a different shape, different location, you know, there's, you're you are correct.
Well, yeah, and I wasn't, I wasn't trying to one up you, I was just, I wanted to bring that out because I think that was that should be, that would be understood, but there were two questions, is one is kind of how it looked and would the building have to be torn down, and I think as I quickly re review the report, it specifically states in there that the Ruth Foster home would have to be torn down, you know, the current house.
Ted, is any of the new courthouses include the district attorney, I know Penobscot didn't, but is the district attorney involved and housed in any of those?
Well, there is the great question, okay, and one that I had great conversations with your counterparts in York County about. So here's what we would say going going into this. And and as we would present this to the legislature. The state is responsible for the state courthouse, the county is responsible for housing the district attorney. So actually, I mean, there's very specific language in the legislation that talks about that. So what I would be coming back and saying to you is, as we build this new building, do you want space in there for the DA? Does the DA want to actually have their offices in there and all that sort of thing? If we have to build the building, if we choose to build the building to accommodate that, we would come back and say to you, because this is what we've done consistently, we, this is what we just did in Belfast. We'll, to the extent that we can provide you for that space, but it costs $10 a square foot to rent it. That's, that's, that's like the going rate, that's what, that's what it would be, $10 a square foot. Now, in your case, I I don't know that you'd want to take a lot of space for the DA in the new building, since you're right there and you're going to have all the built space that you have in the courthouse, you've got the DA space. But but the the shorter answer is, we could accommodate your needs, but there would be a requirement under the law that that the county would have to rent that space in that building, and I'm just telling you because it hasn't changed over the years, we do have space in in Bangor and it was $10 a square foot, and by the way, the commissioners in Bangor, Penobscot County Commissioners originally did not want to have the DA in the space and then after we built the building, then they decided that they did, and that was much more problematic to figure that out after the fact.
You know, Ted, I've always been surprised, considering the the district attorney and his assistants are all paid by the state come under the Attorney General's authorization. All it takes is, you know, a stroke of the pen, make his office a state entity, I'm I'm really kind of surprised, it's never happened.
Yep.
And I was just kind of thinking if someday that did and they were in that courthouse, that's one less complication that the state would have, but anyways, that's not a big deal with us. And as you said, we could move him into the existing court space. We want to get rid of that building that he's in now, so that's not an issue.
That he's in now, that's, you don't own that, right, it's being?
Yes, we own that.
Oh, you do own it, okay.
We own that, yep. It's not, it's not ideal.
No.
Accessible, you know, it's has accessibility problems and of course it's just an old home. But that is his, that is his office space now.
Okay.
Gentlemen, we have a motion on the floor, further discussion.
My only point is, I I understand those talk of the building and all that, but what we're supporting here is simply what the motion said, nothing more than that.
That's correct. So if you're ready, all those in favor of the motion, Commissioner Longbacker?
Yes.
Commissioner Parity?
Yes.
And I am myself, motion carries. So Ted, you have officially our support for your new court building. I saw something, maybe it was just a reference to the cost, but 2023. Does that sound like a a realistic start date if 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 everything fell in place?
Yeah, it it is a possibility, we're building a courthouse in York County, it will be done in 2023, the beginning of 2023, so we're somewhat used to the idea of having one project going on at any time, so that could fit into that time, if I went to the legislature next year and they authorized this project. And if we had a an architect, maybe, well, an architect get on the project right away. You know, it's going to take some time, 2023, they could be, you know, the project could be underway, we wouldn't be moved in by then, but we'd be, we could have it underway.
Gentlemen, anything further from Ted?
Thank you, and I'd love to see at some point that that study that Scott referenced and John, you mentioned.
Haven't you sent that to us, Scott?
Yeah.
I did, I just sent it electronic, so you should have it in your email, Paul.
You've got it in your email box.
Thank you.
That's, with that study, I would be going to the legislature next year, if we had updated or whatever we could, but that that would be telling them you know, cost information and what we see as far as the needs and all that, all that sort of thing, so if things progress as we hope they do. A positive nod from the legislature in this session would be very, very helpful as far as us going back before them again next year, so I will obviously keep you advised of any developments.
No, I just thought that would get me up to speed more than I am, thank you.
Yeah, okay, sure.
Ted, I share your concerns about the issues that the virus is causing you, that's causing, of course, the same issues with failure to get these people in the court and get them whatever, so let's hope that sometime here we get back to some normalcy that gets the courts back into business. And so we are thinking of you.
Appreciate that.
Have you all set with us?
I am all set, yes.
Great, it was good talking to you again, thank you very much for joining us.
My only request, I would just ask, and perhaps Rebecca could send me a an email or something that would contain the language, you know, that you just approved and then I would have that for my my subsequent conversations with the legislators.
Yeah, Rebecca will have my motion within five, 10 minutes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, gentlemen, if nothing else, a motion to adjourn is in order.
I move that we adjourn our meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, Commissioner Longbacker?
Yes.
Commissioner Parity?
Yes.
I am myself, we are adjourned, Ted, thank you, it was good talking to you.
Thank you all, I appreciate your time, okay, bye now.
Thank you.